We are here, it is 6:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
To move.
To move is written in the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Erica LZ Bolton, yes?
Steve will do Concord, yes?
With Spalding Dover, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes?
Alice DeLuca, so yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. It's good to see everyone and thank you those who are joining us tonight. Um, I have not received any public comment. Um, Dr. Dawson, have you received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
I was just double checking and no, we have not received any public comment this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to our consent agenda. And I'd like to go through and see if there's anything that anyone would like to hold. I know the April 8, 2021 meetings, um, that there is something that we want to hold for with that. Um, uh, Judy, did you, at this point, I just want to see what we want to move off the consent agenda.
Um, I just wanted to point out kind of a point of order. There's someone on the call on the Zoom with just a phone number. If they could identify themselves, please?
Yes, hi, it's Sanders Appleton from the retirement board. Um, I'm on the phone, so I can't put my name.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry Judy, he had identified himself verbally before and said that he was on the phone, he couldn't do it and, Julia had sent me the name, so, um, but I, I should have, um, informed the rest of the school committee of that. So, thank you for, um, pointing that out. So again, going through the consent agenda, if you could please just speak out if there's any other items that you would like to hold. We'll hold the April 8, 2021 minutes, um, the minutes for February 3, 2022, uh, minutes from February 16, 2022, March 29, 2022, the approval of prior year invoices, the approval of the list of monthly grants, and the approval of the list of monthly donations. Okay, not hearing anything. Could I have a motion for, um, approval of those items on the consent agenda?
The move.
Second.
Okay, that's your roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Erica LZ Bolton, yes?
Steve will do Concord, yes?
For Spalding Dover, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes?
Alice DeLuca, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's just move to the April 8, 2021, um, minutes, and I think we have a small correction in those minutes in that, um, to replace, um, Dave Horton as, uh, the secretary with Alice DeLuca as the secretary for those minutes.
I move the minutes as edited.
Second.
Okay, any, any discussion? Let's go through our roll call again. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
I'm gonna abstain since I wasn't present during the minutes.
Thank you.
Steve will do Concord, yes?
For Spalding Dover, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes?
Alice DeLuca, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Doctor Dawson. Yes, good evening Chair, if I may, with our guest on the phone, um, would it be possible to move up the finance report ahead of the superintendent's report to allow our guest, um, to answer any questions, um, that may have?
Um, is there any objection to moving the, um, Minuteman Retirement Board? I believe that's the item, is that right?
Correct.
Um, uh, early in the agenda? Okay, let's do that. So who would like to, um, give a intro to this item?
Mr. Ekinen? Are you able to give an intro, either Mr. Ekinen or, um, Ms. Andrade?
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Tonight, uh, Mrs. Zappolin will be giving us a brief introduction to, or a brief synopsis of what took place on December 15th when the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District Retirement Board voted to approve enhanced cost of living adjustment that was, uh, presented by the legislature of, as of, as chapter 629 of the Acts of 2022 and signed by Governor Baker. I'm gonna turn it over to, to Mr. Zappolin now.
Thank you. Um, as Mr. Ekinen said, this is a special provision that the legislature approved and the government has signed. It allows, um, retirement boards and appointing authorities, uh, in this case, the school committee, to grant what they considered an enhanced COLA for 2022 only. Um, because of the, um, very, um, unusual, um, inflation and the large, um, increase that social security received, recipients received, um, the legislature did make this enhanced COLA, which is, um, the normal COLA is 3%. This increases the COLA to 5%, and it's either 3 or 5% on the first 14,000 of a retirees allowance, not the entire allowance. So recognizing that this inflation was very unique and that, um, in equity with the Minuteman teachers who did receive this, um, allowance increase already, the retirement board voted to, um, approve this provision and send it to the school committee for, um, their hopeful approval. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Uh, Pam?
Uh, yes, Steve.
Uh, the finance committee did review this, uh, the other evening and we voted, uh, uh, unanimously to recommend, uh, the, the up to 5% and it should be noted, I know it's noted in, in, in your, in our packet, but that, uh, the way the retirement, um, system works, it, the COLAs are always only on the first $14,000 of, of the, uh, of the pension. So it's, it's not like on the entire amount, it's, it, it's, so it's 5% of 14,000 would be the, the impact for, for all the retirees.
Um, thank you, Steve. Other questions, Alice?
Um, just because we don't often get to ask questions about the retirees, um, how many retirees are there?
Um, there's about 45 retirees.
And one more question, um, a number of years ago, we had a few people who were still, um, they had retired a very long time ago, so that most of their retirement was really in that $14,000 range. Are there any of those people still on our retirement plan?
Uh, yeah, there are some people whose allowances are rather low in the 12 to 13,000 dollar range. Not a ton, but there's a few.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, if not, um, could I have a motion to approve the Minuteman Retirement Board Enhanced COLA, um?
Moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, let's move to our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Erica LZ Bolton, yes?
For Spalding, excuse me.
You're supposed to wait for me for it.
I know, I got excited.
Steve will do Concord, yes?
For Spalding Dover, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes?
Alice DeLuca, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, um, unless there's anything else, um, at this point, we will move to our superintendent's report.
The superintendent is muted.
Sorry. I think many people often wish that I was muted some more. Um, I, um, I am going to ask in order of for us, our, my, uh, update, if we could do the, um, request the approval of the slot allocation formula first before we do the draft FY24 budget proposal to allow our, um, Director of Teaching and Learning Innovations to be able to present. He may need to jump off, um, earlier. So I just wanted to do that, if that's okay with you, uh, Ms. Nurse?
Um, that is fine, um, in assuming no one has any objection. Um, so why don't we move to the approval of the slot allocation formula?
Perfect, thank you. And I am going to share uh, the deck. Oh my goodness, I have too many things open. Okay. All right. Are you able to see the screen?
Uh, yes, we are.
Okay, so Mr. Cherryello, if you would like to proceed?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Dr. Dawson. Good evening, everybody. Um, so for those of you who do not recall, so one of the things that was added into the, um, new admissions policy that we adopted, um, last December, was that the school committee will vote on the proposed slot allocation formula. And just a reminder to everyone what the slot allocations are, is not a quota, which is not something that's detailed in our, um, regional school agreement, but it's really a way to equitably distribute the initial offers of admission. Uh, Dr. Dawson, if you could go back one slide for me, please. Uh, so the formula is the same formula that we used last year. The, the one difference would be that last year it was applied to 160 seats, which was closer to the design enrollment of the school and we will be moving to, um, allocating all 180 of the anticipated enrollment seats. Um, and so that allocation is the exact same formula that's used for weighted voting as detailed in the regional school agreement. Um, so 50% of the 180 seats are divided equally between all nine member communities and then the other 50%, so that, so 90 seats divided by five, or sorry, excuse me, by, by nine, um, and then, um, the other 50% are based on the four-year rolling enrollment. And if we want to just go to the next slide, just to show you what that actually looks like. Um, so you have your 50% equal share and thank you to Mr. Camerata for putting, um, this data together. Um, the 50% average four-year rolling enrollment, you add those two together to get the total, excuse me, um, slot allocation and then apply that to 180 and you can see on the far right-hand column what that, um, looks like in terms of real numbers to your 180. Um, and just when we talk about the fact that it's not a quota, uh, this is just to remind everyone that after we've made these initial 180 offers, we then do it by rank order of the student application score as detailed in the admissions policy. Um, of course, only based on the member communities of students who met the, um, deadline, um, but it is no longer done by these allocations. Um, so I will ask the school committee to please approve the slot allocation formula, um, for, to apply to the class of 2027 for school year 2023-24.
Um, uh, Jeff?
Sorry. So my question is, where are we in, uh, enrollment this year compared to last year? And although again, it is still too early, do we believe we will have a, a longer waiting list or shorter waiting list than last year and by how much?
Sure. So Mr. Stul, and so, um, in terms of just raw applications, which is how we, the only way we can compare year over year until February 15 hits, we're up about 12%, which is around 30 applications from last year on this date, excuse me, um. So if we just play that game out a little bit, last year, there were 70 students to start on a waiting list. Some of this depends on how many we offer admission to, because to get to that 180 number, we offer, uh, above 180 to get down to 180. Um, so let's just say we did it exactly like we did it last year in the, this 12% or so maintains, but as you know, Mr. Stul, and that number has kind of, it was very high at some point, like about 80 over where we were year over year. Now then down to about 12, so kind of comparable to a little bit higher than it has been. So it, it's really hard to say right now. I would, let's, you could say maybe 10% more, which would be, um, you know, 77 to, so let's say 80-ish students versus the 70, um, but if, for, for those who don't know, like, we did ultimately get down to about, not about, to three students who met the deadline. Um, so the initial number on that waiting list can be a bit of a shock, just based on our history of not having one for our member communities, but you know, I guess hopefully it will reduce over time as the fluid process of admissions goes.
So my only comment is, now that we are in the ballpark of what we did last year, uh, I don't feel any need to really review this procedure. Um, so I'm all set with moving forward with this procedure. Um, now if we were back up at like, um, 70 more than last year, then maybe we would have to have a conversation on it. But I don't feel that any, uh, change has to be made, so I'm all set to vote for this. Thank you.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask for a motion to approve the SCOTUS.
So moved.
Thank you. Slot allocation formula was what I was trying to say. Thank you for moving Alice and seconding Judy. So, um, at this point, let's go on to any further, um, comment or questions. Anything else? Okay, let's move to our vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Erica LZ Bolton, yes?
Steve will do Concord, yes?
For Spalding Dover, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes?
Alice DeLuca, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Dawson, I'll turn it back to you.
Yes. Great, thank you, Mr. Cherryello. And thank you to Ms. Madison for all her, um, support and both of you and all the effort that you're making to, um, have a successful admission, uh, season this year. I know there's a lot of positive things going on, so thank you to you and your team. Um, next, we would like to present our FY24 Superintendent Recommended Budget. So I'm going to share, um, that screen now. And here we go. And can everyone see that, okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, um, good evening again, Chair Nurse, Vice Chair Ladue, as all school committee members and our staff and community that may have joined us this evening. Tonight, we present to you the fiscal year 2024 budget recommendation. Every year, when preparing our budget for the next year, there are known variables and unknown variables that impact what is recommended. Two variables that are always known are for whom and for what purpose we create this budget. We created this budget in support of our students and our staff for the purpose of ensuring that our students have the highly qualified professionals they deserve and that our staff can provide access to relevant and, uh, rigorous learning opportunities with the most up-to-date technologies and curriculum. This budget not only supports the academic needs of our students, but also supports the social and emotional needs so they can develop into their best selves. And so this budget is a reflection of our values and our pri- priorities, which are our students and our staff. Just as a reminder that our budget is also grounded in improving teaching and learning for all of our students. And to present the recommended FY24 budget recommendations, I now introduce to you Minuteman's Business Manager, Ms. Andrade, who has worked with Mr. Uh, Ekinen, all of our leadership team, all of our um, department leads and teachers in helping to, um, have input in developing this recommended budget. So Ms. Andrade, I pass this over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson, and good evening, Chair Nurse, Vice Chair Ladue, School Committee members and community. Minuteman's FY24 operating and capital request overall budget is up 4.5% compared to our FY23 budget. Our district objectives follow along with our school priorities. And to echo Dr. Dawson's sentiment that our budget reflects our values, our top three objectives are for our students, our staff and their education. Continuing on, uh, Minuteman wants to increase enrollment capacity to provide more students from member towns access to the quality career technical education that Minuteman has to offer. This continues to be a topic with our school committees and any committees that we discuss that we've reached our design enrollment of our school capacity at 85%. Our athletic fields are currently in operation for our students and Minuteman continues to look at the utilization and revenue opportunities from this incredible resource we have. Lastly, our MSBA project is slated to close in late FY23. However, we wanted to include this in case it trickles into FY24 in, if there's any slight delays in the schedule. Some of the major budget drivers in FY24, uh, most importantly is that we are still in contract negotiation with our teachers. Due to enrollment increasing and the student needs, there is a request for three new full-time equivalent teachers within this 4.5% budget. Minuteman is also part of a health trust with four other regional vocational schools. They've not set their final rates yet for FY24, but recommended that all schools within the trust carry a 10% increase at this point in our budget. Our CTE supplies and materials, um, continue to hit us with supply chain issues and inflation. These increases we are seeing, uh, because the students are using the materials and supplies that we see in industry. So the same inflation that is hitting everyone's pockets is hitting, uh, the supply of materials for CTE. We're seeing, uh, transportation and building utilities and heating inflation increases as well. Our OPEB, which is our other post-employment benefit, uh, contribution is following along the recommendation of the OPEB Study Committee that was submitted and approved by the school committee last year. And that's being carried forward within this FY24 budget. Lastly, we want to continue to fund our capital stabilization fund. This is one of the strategies we have when it comes to our enrollment capacity, which will be discussed in further slides. Just breaking out the FY24 budget a bit more, our FY24 operating expenses are up about 6.18%. Our operating capital request, which is the first line, includes our ESCO lease payment, athletic field lighting debt and capital stabilization funding. This is fairly consistent with FY23 at a 0.21% increase. Lastly, our building project debt, which is our MSBA debt, is slightly lower than in FY23. It's important for us to break this out as seven of our member towns have voted a debt exclusion on this specific, um, school building project pot of money. So we wanted to ensure that you are aware of this. So the real story at Minuteman now in the next few years is enrollment. As you can see in this graph, our total enrollment and our member enrollment is increasing at a great rate, but correspondingly, our non-member town enrollment is decreasing. And as that enrollment shifts, Minuteman's out-of-district revenue is decreasing both from the out-of-district tuition and the out-of-district capital fee revenue we receive, which is set by the state. As a result, the member towns are picking up more of the cost and soon, unfortunately, all of the costs associated with operating and capital budget through their assessments. However, they are seeing the great, um, impact that is having um, by the increased enrollment as more of their students are able to attend Minuteman and get the great vocational education we provide here. So this graph, um, is presented in three phases. Uh, it had a lot of information from it, uh, but it has a really great story to tell. So we wanted to break it up in pieces to make it a little more readable. Um, you'll see here, the purple line across the top is our school design enrollment budget, um, at 628 and that's at our 85% capacity. Moving forward, we keep the school capacity line, but we have included in here the enrollment that I've mentioned in prior slides. Our member enrollment continues to increase with the total enrollment. However, non-member enrollment is decreasing. Lastly, and most importantly, um, to this explanation is our yellow line, which represents our non-member tuition and our capital fee revenue, which is the light blue line. You can see those continue to decrease. And why is this important? These revenues have typically been offsetting our member town assessments. So here we will show the percent change in the four-year rolling average of enrollment, which is the blue column, and the percent change in the assessment, which is the red column for all of our member towns. For most of our member towns, these correspond and track closely together as spelled out in our regional agreement. It's important to note that the four-year rolling average will eventually even out over the next few years as enrollment becomes more typical of full freshman classes being filled with our member town students. We're hopeful the information provided to you on the revenue and enrollment will help get a better understanding as to why, while we're only, um, presenting a 4.5% operating and capital budget increase, the towns are seeing a significant increase more in their member assessments, averaging out to around 14%. The increase in enrollment has supported the additional FTE teachers shown in this slide. It shows how our FY24 budget uh, really reflects, again, our priorities of our students, our teachers and their education. Being cautious of the impact of our budget and assessments on member towns, Minuteman is not requesting funding for all the positions we need. There's quite a bit of need at Minuteman, however, we'll still have to figure out how to cover these needs from within, even if it will cause strain on our existing staff. So where are we now? Uh, to help answer Mr. Stul's question, the enrollment tens are continuing and they are very strong. The class of 2027, which is our eighth graders applying to come to Minuteman for the fall of, um, 2027, three, I'm sorry, fall of 2023, we have 337 applicants from which 272 are member towns and 65 from non-member towns. We have a month to go about in the application season and we have a cap of approximately 189 students for the freshman class. So you can see here how the applications, um, in particular for the in-district students are far exceeding what, um, the enrollment availability has. We are sharing this information on grants to show we do not solely rely on our member towns to fund all of our district needs. We will work diligently to apply and receive grant funding. As you can see, without these grants, it would have required the district to request from the member towns approximately an additional $3 million from the FY23 budget. In essence, the grant funding saved the member towns over 10% for FY23. The district uses these grants to fund positions, curriculum, CTE programming, student programs, purchase instructional equipment and summer programming, to name a few. Grant funding now supports the Minuteman Technical Institute almost in its entirety and it does not rely on member town funding to operate. For the FY24 budget, we are able to decrease our requests to the 4.5% um, due in parts to some of the grants. For example, the Capital Skills Grant for our Animal Science Program of 500,000 um, allowed us to reduce our FY24 requests for informational, um, instructional technology and so what are we going to do, um, about the design capacity and the increased enrollment? Um, our plan is to Our plan is to move forward without increasing any debt. So our first strategy is consistently funding the capital stabilization account, which we have mentioned that we will consistently fund at five hundred thousand in FY24. Strategy number two is leveraging strategic partnerships and grants, particularly for East Building Campus. The slides elaborate a little more on our capital stabilization account balance, being just under two and a half million, and the votes taken by the School Committee on how to utilize that funding. Within the twenty-four budget, again, Minuteman is proposing a consistent five hundred thousand dollars into this account. Our OPEB liability continues to be funded. The School Committee approved a strategy to get more aggressive with the funding, however. The increase in the future years is reasonable due to the ESCO lease ending in FY25. So our total contribution for FY24 will be the seven hundred sixty-two thousand. It is broken out between our active health insurance for our retirees and our OPEB contribution. Minuteman is also following the recommendation of adding ten thousand dollars per each additional FTE. So there's an additional thirty thousand dollars within the budget due to the three new FTE teacher positions. So to summarize, our operating and capital budget breakout and requests totaling four and a half percent is what is being presented to you tonight for our superintendent request. This breakout is our non-assessment revenue, and why that's important, we continue to harp on that. It offsets our member town assessments. So that's why it's so important to our towns. We are being conservative with our state aid estimates, which include the Chapter Seventy-eight and the Chapter Seventy-one Regional Transportation reimbursement. But again, the story here is that Minuteman is losing almost one point eight million dollars primarily from the decrease in the out-of-district tuition and the capital fee revenue discussed earlier in these slides. This loss is being made up by our member towns. These are the components of the assessments, which will be found in our budget book, which will be included for the public hearing. And lastly, again, the breakout compared to our FY23 budget and how the requests are just below what was requested in FY23 as far as percentages. And our Y, again, so important when you think about the budget and financing, that every increase is directly impacting a student or a teacher, and every decrease is doing the same. So we wanted to summarize wrapping up this budget presentation as to focusing on our Y, and that's our students. And we thank you again for your time in listening to this presentation and are interested in if there are any questions in regards to it.
Thank you so much for such a very, very clear presentation. I see a couple of hands. I see Steve and then Judy and then Alice.
Thank you. The Finance Subcommittee has spent, I think, four meetings reviewing budget requests. So we've seen, we've seen all the changes, all the way from over a five percent budget increase down to, I mean, almost a six percent budget increase, I should say, down to the four and a half. At one point, a couple of weeks ago, I'd asked the superintendent and business manager to come up with some other scenarios. What would the budget look like? What would we have to give if we had to do a four percent budget and even a three and a half percent budget? And I think that, in speaking for the Finance Committee, I think we're pretty comfortable with the four and a half percent. I know we are concerned about the impact on our member communities. And I think that some of the, some of the graphs that Nikki showed certainly did no surprise to any of us. I mean, we knew, we knew the, we'd be, you know, obviously losing some out-of-district out-of-district students. And I think as, as Jeff has said, we just didn't expect it to be happening, happening as quickly as it is. So, you know, the Finance Committee discussed this at our last meeting. We voted unanimously to recommend this budget to the full committee.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Let me move on to Judy, then we'll have Alice, then Jeff.
I just wanted to say thank you to the entire administrative staff for putting this together. I think it reads very clearly and succinctly. I particularly like how you start with a picture of the students and you end with a picture of the students because it's all about the kids. So thank you so much for that. I have one small suggestion for a tweak. Minor. The slide that says the operating budget drivers, for number two, it's then the three additional FTE positions. I would recommend the number three be spelt out because it's so close to the number two. If you just glance on it, it almost looks like two point three, so.
Absolutely, easy fix.
Minor, minor. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that great presentation. I have one question. It relates to the grant funding. The, I was really glad to see the grant funding, which is a revenue source. There isn't anything on the revenue slide that speaks to potential grant funding for the following year, and I was wondering if there's how does that work? What, where is that grant funding? What happens if, if you get an additional three million or two million or whatever in grant funding? What, what does it do to our budget? And are you projecting anything for the coming year?
So if, if I may, as, as you know, it's really hard to foresee, you know, some of the upcoming grant offerings. We do sometimes know of some, like, for instance, we know Perkins, that's a federal funding that is for career technical education program. So we know there, that's something that's consistent. Some of our title grants, we are not always, you know, sure of exactly a dollar amount. So that continues to go. And we've kind of incorporated that into our FY24, knowing that those are some of the more consistent federal funding that we receive. So, you know, once we get the final dollar amount, there isn't really a major impact on the FY24 budget. You know, that's part of the reason why we were asking also, you know, we were trying to see if we could get funding to fund a grant writer position, just so that we could actually go and seek out additional grants that are out there, possibilities that are out there. And it does take a lot of our team's time. You know, kudos to, you know, Ms. Bouchard, Mr. DePaolo, who put in many hours to get those skill capitals grants. And, you know, Dr. Hool, who's been getting those CTI grants. It takes a lot of their time and away from their regular roles and responsibilities. But once those dollars, you know, we do get them, we usually ask for a very specific, like, purpose for the grant. And so when we're writing for the grant, we usually try to request for programs that have not been funded, or we know that an expense that may be coming. So for instance, we knew that as our third year of animal science was coming up, that we would need some funding to support that expansion. So that's when we got that five hundred thousand for FY24. We then were able to go back and deduct some of the requests that were in from that department, asking for funding to purchase the large equipment that they would need and the technology for that expansion. We were able to go and now deduct that from our request, which that is how, you know, we were able to decrease our request to four point five. It was a little bit higher. But once that grant came in, we were able to decrease it. So if we are to get some new grants coming up after this budget has been approved, we'll be asking for funding to support positions and or programs that were not funded by FY24. So in that way, it really most often doesn't impact the budget request we've asked. Because when we go for grants, we're trying to help cover that, which wasn't funded. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you.
And I do want to also give a shout out to Dr. Peralt, Ms. Kellyanne, and I want to say Ms. Nick Nicholson, I want to say it is, who they too, like, one of the programs we didn't have to ask funding for, they wrote for a grant with the state and received a hundred and forty thousand dollars that will help support some of our mental health programming here. Again, that was something we didn't have to ask for, for in the FY24 budget.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Stulins has handled that.
I realize I kept saying Jeff, you're next, but I had put myself on mute.
Okay, so one of the challenges we're going to have in this very unusual financial year is to explain to our towns. Now, they may not be, it doesn't solve the problem that they're going to have with these larger increase in assessments. But there is a reason for it, and the reason is not our inefficiency or anything. It's a real reason that we're all going to have to explain at town meeting. And what I wanted to comment on was how, what a great job that was done in this presentation of explaining what happened and why we have this large increase. There was no hand waving. There was no hemming and hawing. It was just the facts presented very clearly. And I personally am very happy with the quality of this presentation in explaining that particularly hard message to get across. I thought it was an excellent job, and I have no questions on the presentation. So thank you for that, I think, exceptional job of explaining something really hard. Even though you have a great presentation, they're still going to complain and be concerned, but you did the best that could be done, in my view.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stulins.
Any other questions or comments?
And I, if, if, Ms. Nurse, I think I just need to really thank the leadership team because, you know, they went and worked with all of our department leads and the department leads worked with their teachers. It was a very all hands on deck, and everyone was aware, right, of the constraints we were all under. And they dug deep to try to really identify what were the wants versus the needs, and they worked together to, you know, come up with this. And so I just want to thank the whole team, all of our staff and our leadership for really working hard to keep at the forefront, our students and our staff, while being very mindful of, you know, the impact that this is having on our towns. We do understand that. And we did not ask lightly for what we are asking, and we do understand, you know, the commitment that our towns are showing every time that they support our budget. So, you know, I don't know, you know, I know you are our conduit messenger to the towns, but again, just thank all of our towns, and we'll be thanking them again as we meet with them in the upcoming months to just show our appreciation for their commitment and support of Minuteman. So thank you to all of our School Committee members for your support as well.
Well, thank you. And again, I want to give my appreciation for such a clear, well-put-together presentation. You know, I think some of our member towns are going to have a lot of tough questions, and, you know, we just need to be prepared to be able to answer them and, and just be very upfront about what went into this budget. So I appreciate the work that's been done and the work that will be coming.
Yes. And so with that, Ms. Nurse, just as a reminder to everyone, we do have the public budget hearing scheduled for January twenty-fourth. That notice was published today, so everyone should know that. And with that, that closes the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to the finance report. And who would like to kick this off?
Well, I can, I can just briefly, we've covered a lot of the issues that the Finance Committee discussed at the last meeting. The, obviously, we approved the warrants and the warrants for the, for the bills. But I think one thing, just to make everyone aware, and it relates to the work that the CAA is doing, is, is the Assistant Superintendent Ikkinen presented to us a bunch of different so-called buy-in scenarios for, for potential new members and what we might want to think about in terms of a buy-in capital cost to, to join, join the district or rejoin the district, as the case may be. So there were several scenarios. We had just seen them for the first time at our meeting last week. So we will be reviewing them again with an eye towards making recommendations of the CAA in the future. But just wanted everyone to know that we are looking at some various scenarios of, of buying into the capital for any, any new members. But that's, I think, pretty much summarizes our Finance Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Ikkinen, anything to add?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our Subcommittee reports and our building, School Building Committee. Ford.
The North Building is really the only report that we have. Starting tomorrow, the steel will be erected and the side sole should be up. So that building will be ready for the students to work on at the end of this month. So that's my report. And just so we don't have a strong snowstorm or anything like that, students will have a new project starting in February.
Ford, can you remind us of what the students will be doing?
They'll be completing the building, installing the electrical, the computer work. They'll be putting up the internal siding and moving the machinery into the, into the spot. So they're going to be busy.
Okay, terrific. Okay, anything else?
There's no, no report on the Tremor Building or the South Building.
Okay, Alice.
It might be interesting to add that information to the budget discussion that the students are providing that work.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point. And there may be some other projects that I know were reviewed today possibly the students can help on also. So we are using, student labor is probably not the word we want to use, but the skills of the students to help to defray some costs and do their good work to make the buildings workable.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Ford? Okay, moving on for the next item on the agenda, I have an announcement that I need to read into the record. So as required under the open meeting law, we are announcing that during the executive session on January seventh, twenty twenty-three, the School Committee reviewed the executive session minutes for all of its meetings held between January first, twenty twenty, and December twelfth, twenty twenty-two inclusive, to determine whether the continued non-disclosure of those minutes is warranted and made the following recommendations. Number one, the purposes for which the following executive sessions were called have been served, and the following executive session minutes, as currently approved, are to be released in their entirety as amended. And I'm going to read the list of those meetings and sessions, January fourteenth, twenty twenty, Executive Session One, January fourteenth, twenty twenty, Executive Session Three, April seventh, twenty twenty, November seventeenth, twenty twenty, Executive Session One, December eighth, twenty twenty, Executive Session One, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Executive Session Two, February third, twenty twenty-two, February eighth, twenty twenty-two, Executive Session One, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, and June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Second determination, the purposes for which the following executive sessions were called have been served, and the following executive session minutes, as currently approved, are to be released subject to redaction by the district's records access officer for all applicable exemptions under the Public Records Law. October thirteenth, twenty twenty, Executive Session One. October thirteenth, twenty twenty, Executive Session One, Two, and Three. And April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Okay, number three, the purposes for which the following executive sessions were called has not been served, but portions of these minutes, which are no longer serve such purposes, shall be released with the portions which still serve the purpose of the meeting remaining without. October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. November seventeenth, twenty twenty, Executive Session Two. December eighth, twenty twenty, Executive Session Two. And finally, number four, the purpose for which the following executive sessions were called has not been served, and the following executive session minutes continue to be without in their entirety. January fourteenth, twenty twenty, Executive Session Two. December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Executive Session One. February eighth, twenty twenty-two, Executive Session Two. February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Executive Session One. March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Executive Session Two. June twenty-second, excuse me, twenty twenty-two. August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, Executive Session One. October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, Executive Session Two. And finally, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. So thank you very much for listening to the determinations of, from the School Committee on January seventh regarding its executive session minutes. Jeff?
I would like to know if that, when you're done working with Minuteman, you're going to do books on tape, Pam?
Not after I have a cold, that's for sure. Okay, Ford?
Yeah, I just, I just want to thank you all, thank you, Pam, for doing that, thank the School Committee. It was a wonderful Saturday session that we had at Minuteman, and I think those that are on this call know that in part, this is what we did last Saturday, so thank you.
So thank you very much. At this point, I would like a motion to enter executive session, and I'd like to ask someone else to read the executive session motion, if possible. Could I have a volunteer to read the motion as written? Thank you, Jeff.
Enter executive session and not to return to open session. Who should remain with us?
Dr. Dawson, Julia, and I think that's it, unless Dr. Dawson. Nope, that's it.
So Dr. Dawson and Julia to remain with us, not to return to open session.
Wait, can you hold on, Alice?
Is there counsel?
Yes.
Oh.
I should, yes.
So who's, who's counsel will be with us?
Peter Sumner, and then we have Nancy Campani on call.
Peter Sumner's Nancy Campani on call, very good. For the following reasons. One, pursuant to MGL, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty A three, to discuss strategy with respect to possible litigation with the Town of Lincoln regarding permit fees if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And two, pursuant to purpose three, MGL, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Minuteman Faculty Association as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. Three, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under authority of any general or special law, specifically, MGL, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two F and twenty-two G, regarding review of executive session minutes for release or continued non-disclosure, specifically, minutes from executive sessions held by the School Committee on February fourteenth, twenty twelve, May twenty-second, twenty twelve, July tenth, twenty twelve, September eighteenth, twenty twelve, November thirteenth, twenty twelve, November twenty-seven, twenty twelve, December eighteen, twenty twelve, February twelfth, twenty thirteen, March fifth, twenty thirteen, March twenty-six, twenty thirteen, April ninth, twenty thirteen, May twenty-first, twenty thirteen, June eighteenth, twenty thirteen, September seventeenth, twenty thirteen, October eighth, twenty thirteen, and December nineteenth, twenty thirteen.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second? Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes?
Steve Ladue Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stulins Needham, yes?
Paul Stalukas Joe, yes?
Okay, thank you, everyone, and just a reminder, there is a separate executive session Zoom link that you all receive, and I will see the School Committee shortly on that link, and thank you to everyone else for joining us tonight.
Thank you.